I'd like to call the Tuesday, February 19th, 2019 Papillion City Council Meeting Order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got two presentations tonight. First one, Jeff, you want to come up a second? We've got an award, the city received an award from Nebraska Concrete Paving Association, an award of merit. I didn't know there was an association and I didn't know they gave awards until we got a call and said we won it. But what it was for was Lincoln Street. And some people might think of, you got an award for a street, but think of the importance of Lincoln Street. Earlier, we were doing some discussions about comprehensive planning and how Lincoln Street's been evolving and what that's becoming in the city. And if you remember right, if you remember last year or summer of 2017, Lincoln was totally reconstructed. Some of that, most of it anticipation of what the park system's going to become and what the community center's going to be and controlling the traffic. And from Lincoln, you're really bridging at 84th, you're into the historic downtown Papillion area, so you want calm traffic, people walking around, people biking, but then you go to the other direction and you hit 90th and you got a more high-volume thoroughfare. So how do you bridge that on Lincoln? And that's some of what the roundabouts are doing is diverting traffic, calming traffic, getting it directed the right way. But doing that road without impacting the neighbors around there, getting the trail in there. But again, just again, think about what Lincoln's becoming. Basically, Lincoln's becoming a boulevard that will be the center of Papillion. It almost reaches the 72nd Street when you get back out by Papio Bay, back in that area. And once that NRD work is done at 108th, it'll stretch to 132nd. So we basically have a boulevard from 72nd to 132nd. And along that, on one end, you've got Papio Bay, on the other end, you've got Prairie Queen, kind of bookend in the two. You've got the historic downtown 1870s core of Papillion right there. We've got a two-mile-long park system, basically 72nd to 84th. And we have, we'll have four bodies of water if you factor in the duck pond on one end, Prairie Queen on the other, and the two NRD dam sites that are being built now. You've got a triple-A baseball stadium. And then with the Prairie Queen Urban Waters Project at 132nd, you've got a nice little, again, a quaint neighborhood. So you've got that boulevard, two-mile-long park system, quaint neighborhood on either end, bookend, and four bodies of water, almost a continuous interconnected park system and a triple-A baseball stadium. And so when again, you think, well, we just reconstructed a road. No, that was a critical component of that whole boulevard and that's going to be the center of Papillion once we have full build-out. So Jeff, that was your project. I want to thank you for all of the work on it. There's an award for it. And maybe have you share a few words. Not many times an engineer gets an award for a road and you can present to the city council.
Well, thank you, Mayor. These projects are always a challenge, this one in particular, because we were working with existing development on both sides. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my staff. I mean, they're the ones that really kind of hold the foundation together at Public Works when I'm out dealing with these projects. And then I just, I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for your support on the project. Without the funding and your support, these things don't get done. So, thank you. We will display this proudly at Public Works.
Thank you for everything you do. And Andrew Rainbow, Sarpy County Economic Development. We've got a, we've got a crowd and a lot of them are students with us. I want to explain a little bit of the relationship. Papillion gets a lot of credit for economic development that occurs. But a lot of it, if you're sitting down in Florida and you think you want to come to Nebraska in the Omaha area, you don't know Papillion versus La Vista versus Gretna. You just, you just understand a big dot on the map that's called Omaha. And that dot on the map, from a regional planning perspective, actually covers eight counties, 33 communities, and two states. Because Council Bluffs is part of, part of that dot on the map. And so when we're trying to win a company to the dot, somebody in Florida, we just want to get them to the dot. And so there is a large economic development corporation ran out of the Omaha Chamber that that's their goal, is just to get people to see the dot and come to the dot. But once they start identifying, yeah, we want to come to that Omaha area, then we've got to start figuring out where's the right place for them. And so at that point, they're probably honing in on a county. And each county has an economic development corporation. And Andrew's the executive director for Sarpy Counties. And then once we start working with them, yeah, you're probably in Sarpy County. Where in the county does it make sense? Then the city comes onto the team. And so it's a real nice handoff and it's actually unique in the nation of how that search is done and how those handoffs work. So, very important partner, a big part of our economic development. Andrew is here to give us an update.
Thank you very much. That was a great, great explanation. I, before the meeting started, I handed out a whole bunch of papers and I promise I'm not going to go through all of them, but I'm just going to take a brief second to explain kind of things that I passed out. Typically, I'm here for a quarterly presentation, but we don't actually give a fourth quarter presentation on a regular basis. We kind of, we have our annual meeting, which we just had a week before last, I guess. And that's when we kind of do a large presentation of kind of what the past year was. But we did bring, we brought our paperwork for our typical fourth quarter reports. We've got our economic development, our economic indicators, as well as kind of our report, quarterly report card that we have typically presented to you. We also did it for the entire year of 2018. So if you want to, if you want to look back at, at kind of a summary of the year, both in our economic development indicators, then those are kind of the value, the overall valuations, permits and things like that that we follow and track, we've got that aggregated there for you as well. There's two other pieces of paper that I am going to hit on. One, we've got some, as the mayor mentioned, we partner with the Greater Omaha Economic Development Partnership. And they've got a few research folks on staff and have some software that we have access to. So we decided, we said, hey, we've had a pretty good run these last five years. Let's run the numbers and see what kind of economic impact we've had on the community. And so I included a brief report out of, we use a program called IMPLAN, which is a kind of a standard economic impact software program that a lot of organizations like us use. And so for the years 2014 through 2018, Sarpy County EDC had a hand in 45 projects supporting the creation of 1,033 new jobs and a capital investment of $3.3 billion in Sarpy County. And so we took those numbers and we put them into the program and we saw that that added about $500 million to the local economy on top of that through spillover activity. And those, when those a little more than 1,000 jobs created almost another 1,000 additional jobs to that. And so that'd be things like service workers, physicians, accountants, bankers and things like that. We saw a boost in total compensation within the community of about $84 million. And those projects also supported 15,000-plus construction workers and an additional 5,320 workers in other industries and another $730 million in capital investment to the total economy. So this is, we're calling this our ROI report. So that's part of our, our return, your return on, on the funds that you support us with. That's some of the things that we like to point out as, on a kind of community-wide basis. But then the other thing I wanted to do, if I can from it here, is we wanted to look at, and we're doing this for each community and the county as a whole, and we wanted to report back to the cities exactly what we're doing kind of in your area. So within Papillion and in your extraterritorial jurisdiction, most often that's where we find ourselves working. We wanted to kind of look at some of the things that, that we did in 2018. So in Papillion, in Papillion's area, we landed four projects. We landed six projects overall. All of our projects were, were actually expansions of existing companies. So one of the things that we've taken a lot of pride in is working with those. Two of the projects were related to Facebook. And that's how we come to our capital investment number, about a little more than $1.2 billion in Papillion area. The vast majority of that is from Facebook's expansion that they announced in April. And then another project that we had related to them was, we've helped them get a little warehouse space where they could do some storage and setup. And then we had also the expansion of Merck was in the Hilltop Industrial Park. And I knew I should have written these down in blanking on the fourth one that we had. But we had four in Papillion and two in La Vista. So in total, in Papillion, we had 340 new and retained jobs. So 220 of those are new and 120 retained. We had 17 project visits. So that's each time we had someone from out of town come in on us, either to look at ground or a building. We count that as a project visit, or a prospect visit, I should say. We also count, even if it's the same project, and we have people coming in, we count that every time. So this year, we had a lot of visits from a singular project. So we had them come in a lot and we counted each one of those. We had 18 opportunities. So those are 18 different projects that we showed either a building or property in Papillion. And so we had about 39 projects overall. So a little more than half of those projects were, were, had visibility for Papillion. Well, the other thing that we've been spending a lot of our effort on is, is spending money and a lot of our money on is site development, which is critical to our success. So in specifically in Papillion area, we spent seven, a little over $7,000 on a wastewater cooling study. That total study overall, we just are about to wrap it up. It was about $45,000. So we started it, kicked it off, we only got billed for $7,000 of it in 2018. So next year, we'll have a much larger number. And then we also spent $12,500 on what we call a highway corridor master plan. It's not, it's not a master plan in the sense of a, of a community master plan. It's more of how, how can we roll out the development of infrastructure and things across the Highway 50 corridor, which is one of our hottest development areas right now for industrial. And then we also spent almost $8,000 on site options and due diligence on sites in Papillion's area. Most of that went to an option of some property, but then again, there's a little bit of money for some site due diligence that we did start in, in 2017 and we just got billed for a fraction of that in 2018. So there was more of that overall. We also did 14 business retention and expansion meetings with, with existing Papillion employers. We had 20 site development meetings. So those are meetings with either public or private entities related to specific, development of specific sites. We had six investor relation meetings. So those are six folks who are investors in Sarpy EDC that we met with that are located in Papillion. And we had 10 other kind of business and community interactions that, that we otherwise couldn't classify, but it wasn't a project, but it was something meaningful that we did with a, with a member of the Papillion community, or business community, that is. So with that, I know the snow is piling up outside, so I will cut it short, but I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have tonight.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Stube?
Yeah. Andrew, I don't know whether you can answer this question or not, but you know, we've heard and we've actually approved warehouse distribution facilities and we've had some under construction. And then we hear today that, that one is closing up. Do you think that's going to have a, a positive or a negative impact on some of that other development that we're, that we're seeing relative to that type of facilities?
Well, it's certainly in the short term, I think, a negative. Obviously, it's a name and a brand that we don't necessarily want to see leave our community in shopco. But I think in the long term, well, I guess I should say from our perspective, when something like that happens, we get a lot of phone calls from other employers or people who are looking for space and most importantly, looking for workforce. So that actually, for a lot of the consultants or site selectors that we work with, they look for that information and it's very positive for them because they see it as available labor that they can capture rather quickly and move in. The building itself is fairly specialized, so I'm not sure exactly how easy it would be to move somebody in there or not. And I'm not, I don't know exactly the timeframe or what they plan to do with it. But we certainly have, have reached out to the owners and their representatives and are trying to figure out how we can help chart a path forward quickly. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure the building has a lot of utility that'll get, that'll get reused pretty quickly. Overall, our industrial and warehouse vacancy is actually probably unhealthfully low. So the, I expect it would be, if the building is available, it would be coveted, I would think, by other users.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Andrew. Next is the administrator's report. Ms. Myers, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make this short as well. I just wanted to remind those that signed up for the elected and appointed officials training tomorrow night at the Embassy Suites in the wingtip room. I think we've got one council member that signed up from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Also, we're looking at scheduling a top ceremony for the Papillion Landing, Landing Center. We've got the last piece of steel that's going to be going up and prior to that, we want dignitaries to sign their name. So look for an invitation, but we're shooting for next Thursday at noon in the community center. So again, you'll receive an invitation. And lastly, I think you should have received an email, but we did declare a snow emergency beginning at 9:00 PM tonight for our view, all vehicles to be removed from the streets so that we can continue to snowplow. We're expecting that to expire tomorrow at 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Sunday. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty and zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item D1, Ordinance 1831, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 205 Zoning Ordinance, Article 22, Having to Do with Mixed Use Districts. The applicant is the city of Papillion. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Stube. Item D2, Ordinance 1832, An Ordinance to Amend Section 205 to 270, Section 205 to 72 and Section 205 to 88, All of Article 38 Wireless Telecommunications Facilities of Chapter 205 of the Papillion Municipal Code, Having to Do with Small Wireless Facilities and Small Wireless Facility Support Poles. The applicant is the city of Papillion. Is there a council member that will introduce?
All addresses.
Introduced by Councilman Kluk. Item D3, Ordinance 1833, An Ordinance to Approve a Change of Zone from LC Limited Commercial to CC Community Commercial for the property legally described as Lot 4, Summerfield 2nd Edition, Generally Located at 780 Pinnacle Drive. The applicant is Jared Reese, St. Martha's Episcopal Church. Is there a council member that will introduce?
Introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Glover. Item F1, Ordinance 1817, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 205 of the Papillion Municipal Code to Remove All References to Floor Area Ratio Far. The applicant is the city of Papillion. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1817? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Kluk. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty and zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F2, Resolution R190021, This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a special use permit to allow commercial recreation controlled impact as a permitted use on the property legally described as tax lots A1B1A, A1B1C, A1B1D, Section 231412, Generally Located at 841 Terra Plaza. The applicant is Karen's Fireside. And this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. I'll call for proponents. I will recognize the applicants here. Don't know if you want to share anything, but any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190021?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Kluk. Any council discussion?
I've got some questions.
Yes.
Of the applicant.
Yep. Can you turn your mic on?
I think it's on.
Absolutely.
Hello?
Hi.
Can you state your name for the record?
Sure. I'm Julie Mabon. I'm the owner of Karen's Fireside.
Okay. And this is going to be a, like a social hall? Is that what I understand?
Correct. So many of you know I've had Karen's Fireside over at 1214 North Monroe, just north of Monarch High School. That's been, the building has been sold and is being remodeled as ABC and Me Daycare. So I'm, the plan here is to move the business to 841 Terra Plaza. Karen's Fireside had a capacity of about 300. So the reason I sold that, downsizing, so this space would be 99 as a maximum.
Okay.
So quite a bit smaller than what I've traditionally had. I still plan to host Lions Club monthly dinner meeting, city of Papillion off at a lot of their functions, but they'll be smaller in nature.
Okay. And this location is right next to the Genesis Health Club, just to the south of that?
Yes, yes.
Is that correct? In the same parking lot area?
Yep. Genesis is independently owned. Many of you know Terra Plaza's recently been sold, so there's some new owners with Mike Hogan passing. So I'll be the first new tenant for Terra Plaza, so we're hoping we can kind of kick that off.
It's in the bay directly north of Grecian Euros, right?
Yes, right on the island. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the north bay of the strip mall.
I'm just sort of wondering if that's going to create like traffic problems in the parking lot? Have they said anything to you about improving the condition of that parking lot? Because I know there's several potholes there.
Now, as far as, you know, this is a little bit of a change for me because this will be a rental. I owned that other building, so of course, snow removal and all that was under my purview. So I mean, from our experience, we've had pretty good luck with the new management there, but they're fairly new. They just took over October 1st.
Is the landlord here this evening?
No.
No?
No. I think some of you know him. They also own the Walnut Creek Mall where Good Life just moved in. They also own the Brentwood Plaza where Wendy's and other companies there. So kind of in this region. The reason they bought Terra Plaza is because they've got a presence in some of these other areas. First Management, Inc. is the name of the owners.
Okay. I guess I'd like to have some assurances that with the increased traffic flow at that specific spot, that there's going to be some improvements made to that parking lot because there are chuck holes there, as I think Mr. Stube can probably attest to since I know he...
From a, that'd be interesting. From a city side, since it is a private parking lot and it's not public, I don't know if we can give you any assurances that you're looking for, but...
They're asking us to...
But as far as traffic related to a special use permit and is the traffic appropriate in that area, I guess I'll look to Mr. Sturzma to comment.
So we did analyze the expected parking demands for this use and verified that there is sufficient parking in the parking lot. We did not look at the, the condition of the parking lot as part of this application because as was mentioned, it's a rental and the applicant has no control over that.
I, one thing I can add, the, I looked at all of Papillion. So I talked to Shadow Lake. I looked at all, all different options. I looked at buildings. The buildings in Papillion are very expensive right now, a little bit out of my range. So the reason I picked Terra Plaza is there's plenty of parking.
Right.
So when you think about having an event, and in this case, it'll be smaller than what I was used to, but there's plenty of parking in Terra Plaza downtown.
Don't mistake my questions for being in opposition.
Yeah.
I'm just, I know that we're, I know that we're, we're bringing in a whole lot more traffic into a small area...
Sure.
...that I happen to know from experience has bad conditions. That's why I'm asking these questions.
Sure. Yeah, totally understand. Because I know from me as a tenant, of course, we want to make sure that the parking is sufficient and adequate for any of our guests.
But since it is a rental, I would say it's a question the applicant's probably not, has any ability to answer.
That's it.
Okay.
But it's a very good question. I agree totally.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah. Any others?
First off, I want to thank you for staying in Papillion. Your business has been one of those longstanding parts of Papillion that many, many people grew up going to Karen's Fireside. So...
Lot of good memories.
A lot of memories. And so, you know, when the, when the daycare was coming in, it was very, very pleasing to hear that you were just moving down the street.
Yeah.
And then secondly, I want to thank you very much for choosing Terra Plaza because Mr. Sunday has a point there. Terra Plaza is, is experiencing some problems. It's, it's not fulfilling its potential the way it could. And I would love to see businesses such as yours, first off, generate the traffic that's necessary to make the, make the bays in Terra Plaza worthwhile. And then two, I would encourage you, yes, encourage your landlord that it would be in everybody's best interest, yours particularly, if Terra Plaza does not go, not become any more deteriorating than it is now.
I agree totally.
One other quick comment, because it is a little bit in the vein, might be a little off topic, but it's in the vein. If people are not aware, her father is the one that owned Grecian Euros, Norm, and Norm passed away four, five months ago. And she did make the decision to keep Grecian Euros going. And so again, if you think of Terra Plaza in the condition, Grecian Euros could have closed. It's her investment in Terra Plaza that's keeping another tenant in there. So she kept a tenant going and is bringing a new tenant. So Jermaine to this topic is she, you are playing an important role in the revitalization of Terra just at the very beginning of it. So thank you very much. Good questions, Mr. Sunday. Thank you. Any other questions? Please vote.
Okay.
Sixty and zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is item F3, Resolution R190022, A Public Hearing and a Vote. This is a resolution to approve the one and six-year road plan for years 2019 to 2026. Again, a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190022?
Vote.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Any council discussion? Mr. Ingberg.
Just, just a point of a question. I know we recently had a private company do the mapping of our streets. I was just curious if that was, we were able to utilize that for this plan or it was a little bit premature. We're not at that point yet.
I'll take an, I'll take a stab at the answer and I'll let Mr. Thompson weigh in if it needs clarified. But I would say it's premature. What you see in the one and six years, pretty tickable of what we've done for concrete repairs, having that kind of plug figure in there. We're waiting for that report to come back. And then once we have the data from that report, we know what the standards of the roads are, then we'll come with a specific plan on how to address those. Is that, is that fair? Can you give a quick update of maybe on where we are in the process?
Sure, you bet. We just received a, an overall map of the entire road networking system from the consultant last week. Haven't really had a chance to digest it. They don't have the full report yet, but they expected within the next couple of weeks they would have been able to boil all that down and give us kind of a bucket of, of road conditions and how much, excuse me, how much square yardage we have in each kind of bucket from, you know, good, excellent condition pavement to poor and needs repair type pavement. So next couple of weeks, I would suspect we'll have a full report.
Yeah. Well, just to clarify, the city always does a very good job of inventorying the streets already. And they go around and check all the streets and establish priorities. But I just wanted to ask the question because I know that we went to an upgrade to do that. I didn't think it was ready yet, but I wanted to ask the question.
Correct. Yes. Can you turn on the mic again? Mr. Sunday.
Mr. Thompson, what are we doing on Pinnacle Drive between Cornhusker Road and American Parkway? That's on the one-year plan, correct?
Yes, it is.
And we're, we're tagged to spend over half a million dollars there. I'm curious what that is.
That's the road expansion that was necessary for the family ER facility that was just recently sold on that southwest corner of that intersection.
Okay.
That would include all the pavement, the storm sewer system, sanitary, as well as the water.
Is the developer helping pay for that or...
Yeah. The way that was negotiated, without that road and the infrastructure, it was basically undeveloped land without infrastructure. And from a market price, rough numbers, it probably would have sold for about $5 a square foot. That was what we would have sold it for. With it being, if we could consider it development land, so infrastructure's there, roads there,[1714.26]
land, so infrastructure's there, roads there, we were able to get more at about $15 a square foot. So, in the negotiations, they did agree to the higher price, and then, as a result, we're taking some of those proceeds to fund the road. So, yes, indirectly, they are paying for it.
I guess I'm concerned that we're spending money on an access road when there's roads that serve the actual people of the community, such as 90th Street heading to 370 from the Baptist Church there, in terrible shape. I see that's on the next year's plan under Papillion Commons, which is now, as I understand it, a dead duck. So, I don't know why that's even in here.
As far as it being an access road that doesn't serve people, it actually will be a public road, and it's what that road will do, that large plot of land is not divided yet. What we're, well, it is now. What we did is we broke it into three commercial lots, and that road fronts them all. So, with that road being put in, the other two lots that the city owns will now also be available as commercial lots. So, those other city, that other undeveloped city land moved from that $5 a square foot up to 15. So, it actually added a lot of value to the city's property.
I understand that, Mayor, I do. I just question whether we shouldn't be taking care of the citizens that are using a road a lot more than they are an access road over there, because 90th Street's in bad shape, and I know you're aware of that. That's all I have.
Oh, as far as timing of roads in the road plan, I'll defer to Mr. Thompson.
Well, when we developed the plan, we used the best available information we have in anticipation of that project moving forward. We included it in the plan. Doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be done. It's just a placeholder that in the event that the project does move forward, we're able to go ahead and complete it as we had originally committed. In regards to repairs, we talked about potentially overlaying 90th Street this year, but not knowing, I guess, the status of the Papillion Commons project as a whole, it didn't seem like a real good use of the city's funding to overlay that if they're just going to come in and tear it all out and repave it at that point.
Since I do have some knowledge, I would tell you that the Papillion Commons is not going. That's my understanding. Developers backed out.
Yeah. So... Yeah, that, I'm not sure they've withdrawn their application formally yet to the city, but that could very well be the case.
Any other discussion? If not, please vote.
Five years, one day by Sunday.
Motion passes. Next is Item F5, Resolution R190027. This is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as a plating of Tax Lot 20E, the north 10 feet of Tax Lot 21 and Tax Lot 20C, Section 27, Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the, did I skip one?
Four.
Oh, I sure did. Turned one too many pages. Item F4, Resolution R190025. This is a resolution to approve the First Amendment to Founder's Ridge Subdivision Agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190025?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty, zero, nays.
Motion passes. Now, we're on Item F5, Resolution R190027, public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as a plating of Tax Lot 20E, the north 10 feet of Tax Lot 21 and Tax Lot 20C, Section 27, Township 14 North, Range 12 East, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located at 830 South Madison and 831 South Harrison. The applicants are Ashley and Jacob Miller, Miller's Paradise. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190027?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Sunday?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ingberg. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty, zero, nays.
Motion passes. Item F6, Resolution R190028. A resolution to approve the Third Amendment to the Ashbury Farm Subdivision Agreement. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190028?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Cluuk?
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Sixty, zero, nays.
That's all the regular agenda items. I don't believe any committees met. Audit didn't meet, did it? No, audit did not meet. Any comments from the floor? I see we've got a number of students here. You guys get to come up to the podium and then tell us who you are and why you're here. And you all get to come up, so we'll wait. Just go ahead and line up.
I'm Abby Toyn. I'm here for Mr. Keller's Applied Learning Project.
Hi, I'm Tristan Birch. I'm also here for Mr. Keller's Applied Learning Project.
I'm also here for Mr. Keller's Applied Learning Project. My name's Connor Bernasi.
I'm Justin Hanson, and I'm here for the Applied Learning Project.
I'm Sam Romchek, and I'm here for the same reason as everyone else.
I am Devin Becker, and I'm here for the Applied Learning Project as well.
Thank you all for coming out. Let Mr. Keller know you get extra credit for coming out tonight with the weather. Any council comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Sarpy County Economic Development did have its annual meeting. Andrew gave that report. Also, thanks for everybody that showed up to the ribbon cutting in Midland's Place for Pato Loco. That is a new owner relaunching a business. And then, Ms. Hanson did another great job with the senior center and the Valentine's Day banquet. It's a great tradition where Papillion and La Vista Senior Centers go together and have a Valentine's Day dinner. And then, the Chamber also had its Legislative Coffee Event. Mr. Mungard and myself were there. Senator Arch was the primary one and gave a pretty good overview of what's going on down with the legislation. Councilwoman Cluuk, congratulations on you recently receiving an award, St. George Award of the Episcopal Church on 27th from St. Martha's. And from what I understand, and actually, I got it in quotes, so I'll read it, "The award's given to acknowledge distinguished service by adults in the spiritual, physical, mental, and moral development of youth through service of the church and through national youth agencies." So, congratulations and thank you for what you do in the community. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Mayor, I guess I forgot to maybe have you talk a little bit about some of the concerns related to coyotes that are running around in neighborhoods.
It's a great, great topic. Let me do a couple of calendar reminders, then I'll hit on two items, and that'll be one of them. Again, tomorrow, the Elected and Appointed Officials Training. If you have not signed up yet, I would still encourage you to go. This is a national speaker, and we had this opportunity about eight years ago, so it does not come along very often. So, I'd really encourage you to attend that. Thursday, there is an employee recognition over the lunch hour, if you're able to come. I know they'd appreciate that. And then, Monday and Tuesday is the League's Midwinter Conference. If you're not signed up and you can go, it's, we can still probably get you in, just let Kendra know, and we can work on that. Reminder of the snow emergency, starting 9:00 tonight, goes till 5:00 p.m. tomorrow. For the people in the audience, the students, what that means is no parking on the streets. And actually, by declaring a formal emergency, it gives us some unique powers, and some of that's police powers. If there's cars on the street and they're causing safety issues, we can actually intervene and tow them and clean, get the streets. So, declaring an emergency is a fairly serious item. But to the question, we've had two things that I think are appropriate to update the council on. One is we, Citizens Academy for the Police is coming up. It's not too late to register for that, is it? Or is, okay. So, if anybody has any question on how does policing work, what's policies, what's procedures, why do police do what they do, is a great way for the residents to understand policing, and it's a Citizens Academy. Can you real briefly give an overview, like how long it is, when it meets?
Maybe? There you go. Okay. And so, we're going to be doing eight sessions, which is less than we've done in the past. We thought that would fit with people's schedules a lot more. We're actually planning on doing one night of just our detective that's at the FBI Task Force that's assigned to the Child Enticement Task Force, and he's also going to talk about that, his work that he does there, but he's also going to talk about social media and smartphones, how they play into solving crimes, because that's really exploded over the last five years with the capacity to try to find out how phones are used at crime scenes. For example, if a bad guy commits a burglary and he has a smartphone, that smartphone's trying to attach itself to any type of wireless, and that is an electronic fingerprint that can be downloaded from the victim's Wi-Fi. That's just a good example. And then, we're going to have several other classes. Of course, we're going to have both of our Canines there, and our Canine Officer, Chris Golay, will be giving some demonstrations, and it's going to be a really, I think, a really informative time for people.
I want to encourage people to sign up for it, because again, sometimes somebody might see a police response and maybe think they're, why are they doing what they're doing? And it's just an excellent way to learn that. Specific to the question on coyotes, it's actually, if people watch social media, it comes up quite a bit more and more. Seems it goes in cycles. About every couple of years, the topic will come up. And if people are not familiar with coyotes, the general discussion goes to the poor coyotes, we're building all of these houses, they don't have any place to go, so where's the coyote? Actually, what I'm learning from Mr. Gowen and from Nebraska Game and Parks is it's actually a sign of a healthy environment with what we're doing, the green space, open space, protecting the waterways, the stormwater management, the interconnected parks, it's actually building a very healthy environment. And so, we're seeing a lot of wildlife coming back that used to not be here. So, if you think of urban forestry, it's actually probably a good sign. And so, but what that means is, we've got about three things going on. One is just general education to the population of how do you live with basically what we're calling urban coyotes. And Game and Parks actually is doing a lot of education around this, and so, we're working with them to get that information and try to get that out. And that'll be an ongoing thing on a fairly regular basis of just educating people how to live with urban coyotes. The other thing is, there may be areas where we have small pockets of them, or maybe, is it a nuisance or not a nuisance? We're identifying those and figuring then out, what's the appropriate response there? And I'll take one of the golf courses, for example, because it's a big green space. What happens if there's a pack of them hanging around in a certain area all the time? And Mr. Gowen is working with Game and Parks, so we're getting state-level response, expert responses on best practices of how to handle that, because sometimes, it's kind of like feral cats. There might be a perception that if you take care of the feral cat, you're solving the problem. Actually, you could be making it worse. And so, we're understanding those best practices related to coyotes. The third issue, and I think it's specifically the one you're raising, there has been an incident where somebody in town actually is feeding them, putting food out, food out, and in that case, it's actually attracting them into areas where you don't want them, and it's changing their behavior a little bit. So, in that case, we're looking, what's our nuisance ordinances? What's our health and safety ordinances? What's our animal control ordinances? What's our trash ordinances? All specific to that situation. And in that case, we've got the building department involved from a code enforcement. We're consulting with legal on all of our ordinances, and we're getting Nebraska Humane Society involved as well. We probably, I'm going to guess, will need to make a couple of tweaks to ordinances and upgrade them specific to this scenario, but we're trying to figure out what is the best response. And so, it's a coordinated effort between police from animal control, from the Parks Department, from the golf course, from building, Game and Parks, NRD, and the Humane Society. That answer?
Yes, it does. And I guess I would just make one comment, that if we're looking at potentially tweaking